They said it was double booked.
Hey everyone, I hope everybody's doing well today.
Yeah, they're doing good. They're booking time.
Early bird gets the worm.
Exactly like government.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey guys, let me know where you're coming in from. I'm gonna just go camera first. Stay tuned everybody, we've got a crazy video coming out. Right here. From the Uvalde Police Department. So, stay tuned. We've got some good videos coming out. We do, we got some good videos.
We just said, filmed a Uvalde officer trying to attack. Good citizen news, he jumped out of his vehicle and went chest to chest looking like he wanted a box.
Yep. What's up our guy, how's it going bud?
Otto with Watchdog, thank you so much for the donation since. If anybody's want to donate towards the channel, please. Uh, send it to Cash App or PayPal so it's readily available if I need it to get one of the guys out of jail today. I am out here with Rogue Nation, Rogue Nation, James Madison Audits.
You don't like your notifications?
Good citizen, nobody's gonna give my notifications, so I got this. I got a good citizen news. We got Corners News.
We got Rogue Nation.
As you can see right here, we got Corners.
Good citizen.
Rogue Nation. James Madison's in here somewhere.
We got Autumn and Gary right there.
He's getting James Madison's stuff. I'm off that one.
We got corporate media in the background.
And then a bunch of mainstream. And.
Ready? Takes a sheepdog.
He's right over here.
No, he never did it with his hat.
I don't think I said it.
No, you do your hat down alone just to hold it back. It's probably under between your seat and your collar.
Everybody's doing well. Guys, I don't know who you're telling us about. Put that, put that in the comments.
Sheepdogs lost this one.
Hit that audio. He's doing well. I got some great videos. Uh, as you'll see.
James Madison.
So we'll uh.
Good citizen, okay, we're here to film for you guys.
We got it, guys, we got it.
Hit that thumbs up if you're coming in too guys, we got some good content coming y'all's ways.
Okay, just before we start. The Fire Marshal Code is forty under normal circumstances. Your tripods all take up more space than that, so when the Fire Marshal gets here. Some of you may have to step out. There are some people that are citizens here that are gonna be signed up to speak and certainly they need to be able to be in the room. So please be aware that when he comes in, if he does a head count, he may ask some people to step out. We do have an overflow over in the courtroom. Um, and it will be, it's Facebook Live, so it'll be over there. And then we do have a few seats out in the hall, okay?
Best people that can step out is these people from here. Probably a good idea.
It would be.
Probably a great idea.
Be difficult to have a meeting here. I mean, y'all would just be standing here all night, so if you want to do it that way.
We can, we can hire some new ones, right?
Watch the old ones.
I mean, honestly, I probably saw it. Out with the old and with the new, you know, you do it every morning.
Yeah, guys. Share this out, get this video out there, we want to share this out, we want everybody to know what's going on here. Um, in this, in the first city council meeting, I believe.
It's crazy. Uh, we're independent, we just like uh, loving families and helping people. And uh, it seems that when we find tolerance for activity, we have to go and face it. For those that are a little more timid, um, non-confrontational is what they call it, I guess. Some people just don't like argumentation, and I don't mind it, so I come here to do it for them. Yes, ma'am, no problem. No problem. We're here for y'all. I got a couple of kids myself, and I don't appreciate the activities of these public officials.
Guys, I hope you're getting. I did try.
We got people from four different states here.
This is good citizen, I did try. Um, I've been uh.
They said that they were double booked.
Is it small?
It was a present, I've been having issues guys.
Maybe they're trying to suppress the amount of people that can do that?
Give my phone.
Make it more uncomfortable, hotter, smaller.
I, this is the, this is the second.
My families here are appreciative that we're here, guys. I don't want to have to argue with these guys, they're non-confrontational, you know? And uh. We're here to argue with these folks. That uh, the nicer people won't. And uh, let these city officials know that they just need to go ahead and step down. The lady just now was saying, uh, some of y'all might have to step out. And James Madison told her, the only people that need to step out. Is the people that sit in these chairs. Those are the people that need to step up. She said, oh, will you just be sitting here in a room with no meeting? No, we, we hired new ones. Better ones. Lalo.
His name's uh.
That's why he was smiling when I said out with the old and with the new, because he's one of them?
Everado, Lalo, Zamora, yeah, that's him right there.
But he's on like, he's the second. Oh, Lalo, that's what we knew. District one. So, so when I said out with the old and with the new, this guy was laughing, Lalo thinks it's funny that we need to get rid of this. City Council, yeah.
Yeah, guys, hit that like button when you come on in here. Helps, helps activate it, let me know where you're coming in from too. Where you're watching from.
Lion one, thank you for sharing the link. Anybody that would like to help support and keep me on the road during accountability in situations like this.
I do have resident, yeah, Rise, if you could share my, my links, just so if anybody wants to donate. Uh, because it's readily accessible.
Guys, you can only smell the fear, you can fucking taste it.
The like button was assaulted.
Joe, what's up Joe? How are you sir?
Oh, how are you? Doing alright?
I'm doing alright sir.
Good, good. Thanks, Joe.
Joe, nice to meet you. How are you?
Missouri, Wyoming. Northeast Los Angeles.
So are only residents of the county or local residents of the state?
They're saying, let's call the citizens and get such a.
I mean, I've been signed up to speak.
It's supposed to be three, a three minute session.
So let's forget it, we people. Um, we. I am signed up to speak guys, so I will be speaking on this. I have some feelings about this, but I just, I didn't figure out. Yeah. So, what's up Candace? What's up everybody?
Is this yours?
Hope everybody's doing well, we're here in town, we're here right now. Uh, once people watch, there probably have some qualities of being lively and everything. But uh, once we do, we got public comment where I guess. Public comments right here.
Guys, if y'all are in here, we know that uh, all my notifications are gone, so YouTube's not sharing any of my stuff because.
Excuse me, are those assignments?
If you'd like to spread this message far and wide, please go ahead and click that yellow button, it's pointing to the right, it's a share button. I think, I think it's to the right. Share. Share with some friends, maybe even family members that's interested in Uvalde, or what's going on in Uvalde. If you have any family members, any friends that are interested in what's going on, you'd like to see this, sometimes maybe. Please shoot some, we can, I'll be here to talk to you and for y'all's and let y'all know what's going on firsthand. Instead of relying on these guys. That will massively be edited here. This will be livestreamed. Share that for them. Much love, homeless, girl. My homeless gear on today to see if I was gonna be discriminated against. I put on my homeless gear today to see if I was gonna be discriminated against. I have different outfits, you know, to see if I look certain way, will I be given less access? You never know, it happens.
I'm sure.
It happens.
We put our microphones up there, so we can get some great uh, content.
And for those of y'all that haven't seen this already, this is a good investment, it's called a scump bag. Anything in Texas that has a lock requires a warrant. And so, if you'd like to keep your belongings safe, go ahead and get you a bag that locks, scump bag.
Yeah, guys, if you want to go over to somebody else's channel, it'll like you better. And head on over, everybody else is live.
We got ninety-six in here, if we got all ninety-six of you to share this with one person. We'd have double, huh, simple math.
James Madison told uh, that one of the city council members, I would assume. Uh, that, that they uh, that they just need to, the people that need to get out of here.
Got James Madison. I'm off that one. Rogue Nation. Good citizen. Got a sheepdog, started being very cute. And myself. We got your Corners News.
We don't need y'all to speak up to the mics, so.
Oh man, we were walking over there when they were coming out of the gate, and this is when all this started. And uh, he was like, we got some feral hogs over here. Autumn and Gary said, we got some feral hogs over here, and I was like, and I was carrying AR, and I was like, yeah, we just got some feral hogs over here, and we just spotted it? So, yeah, guys. We uh, I love my hogs, my favorite thing is shit.
I love bacon.
Yeah. Bacon's great. So stay tuned guys, hit that thumbs up, you got thirty-four people.
Guys, I don't know if y'all just noticed, but I dropped my GoPro right there in front.
Yeah, you did.
And so.
That's the GoPro.
My GoPro is about to be filming that dude's face this entire freaking time.
Yeah.
Until it dies at least, I should actually check the battery. Hmm, yeah guys, let's. Let's change the battery real quick, let's change yours. Go ahead and get it in. I like nooo. Alright guys, there you go.
This guy, yeah, he's a lieutenant.
Yeah, my GoPro's set up. I am recording static and live for you guys tonight. Well, he said he was at the shooting, that's why he was just shooting at it, that's why he was carrying weapons. I don't know, I guess, I guess second amendment. I mean, he attacked two of them, he's on one, I have a rifle.
Yeah, I was on one.
But also I have this. Cause he, cause he, well, I also was like, dude, put on your seatbelt, safety first, and he said, make me. That's fucked, man, that's fucked up, like, that's. It was rude, it was rude. I can't believe a lieutenant would jump out.
I don't like that after.
With all this stuff going on. People just start getting fired.
Yeah, that's Jack Miller in the background, considering the GoPro.
There you go guys. No, that's the officer that I asked to give him a ticket because he watched another officer drive off without a seatbelt and he refused to give him a ticket. This officer refuses to ticket other officers, it's laws for thee and not for me. We can break the law and you can't. We're here to ticket you, take your money. And we want it for free and you pay us. Head officer right there, guys.
Oh, what is?
Did you say I stink?
No, he's uh.
It is already.
Oh, it's hot? Is that what you're saying, it's hot?
He's got a, he's got his uh, ninja shirt on, and then he's got his homeless pants. These are his best day pants.
These are my, these are my lucky pants, and my ninja shirt. It's custom made airbrushed by my buddy. On the back, the caution tip, because I'm always past it, you know, caution tip's always behind it?
Hell yeah, thank you Candace, I appreciate it though. We got a lot of the home owners in this council, stay tuned guys.
Lot of heavy hitters.
Stay tuned, hit that, hit that thumbs up guys, hit that thumbs up.
Oh, it doesn't. That's just great, he paid for it.
There you go, you own battle. Thanks for joining us today Candace, everybody that's in the chat, please let me know where you're from and where you're watching from.
Oh, we gotta go. Tar, Taras, Lawford, that's the city attorney.
NC, Arizona. Southern Illinois. Colorado. Arizona. NC. Virginia, San Diego, Hawaii. Oregon, Michigan.
I don't know what happened to your chair, LG.
Houston. UK, Canada, Louisiana, Seattle, Tennessee.
Hell yeah.
KY, Arizona, Florida, Oklahoma, Nakadosh.
So y'all don't have to come out.
Florida.
So I, this is news, this is why.
Denmark. Tucson, Arizona, Cali, Michigan, Amsterdam. Australia, Dayton, Ohio.
Yeah.
Amarillo.
Yeah, Jack Miller.
Australia. AZ.
Oh, you did?
Nationwide baby, not even that, worldwide, we are watching worldwide. Thank you guys for joining us, if anybody's interested in this Uvalde City Council meeting, share this with your friends and family.
Yeah. He was giving them a pounding too. Hey, thanks LG. Yeah, brother, if you want to donate, um, i- if you want to donate in the future, not now, I'm just saying, if you want to donate. Use the hashtag, it's available, because it really, um, it's, it's available, and you can use it right now for taxes. You can drive ten hours into state Texas and still be in Texas. People don't realize how, how big it is.
Yes, Mr. Everything, I have notifications today, I've been publishing too many things. So if you're good, please by sharing this, it really helps.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, 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 I took I-ten all the way through.
Yeah, oh my god.
Oh, my god.
Yeah. See, even Rogue News. Thanks, Robinson, I appreciate it both. Sorry TJ, I was with TJ.
I think there's probably a better officer around the medicine.
Stay here, it's, yeah, it's huge, it's huge guys, people don't realize how new this is. It's.
Oh shoot, hey, Grease Monkey Videos, thank you so much for being in here with me, good to see you in here Brian.
This is cool.
Yeah, look at the fake stream here. Here, let me, just look up here, look at this fiction. Look at this. Look at this. Look at this. You know what? All of their videos are gonna be heavily censored and edited. And this one livestreams just for you. And you, and you, and you, and you. Single one, because I want you to know true, I want us to know true. I'm sick of these lies, I'm sick of these cowards running with their tail between their thighs, man. Cowards, we just have a lieutenant. One of the first responding officers checked the situation, what was his name? What was his name?
Javier Martinez.
Guys, uh, Brian, if you want a story, Javier Martinez, one of the first um, responders to this situation. Just tried to accost and fight us in a parking lot. He got out of his vehicle aggressively because we asked him to put on a seatbelt and follow the rules. He said, make me put it on, and got out of his vehicle. This drawn to good citizen and myself. Y'all stay tuned for that video.
No, no candy. No candy for Rogue today.
What happened is a whole group of cops came, and they corralled his ass back into his car and got him out of there before he got in trouble.
Yeah. Your numbers are good right now.
Short story, but it wasn't over there yet.
Is there a resident with a child here?
Stay tuned for more.
No, we're trying to get family in here, we prefer to have family.
There's a resident with a child, I'll give up my seat.
How about a family member?
A family member, one of the children.
That's what we're trying to do.
Give up my seat too.
Okay, we'll do that.
Can you stand, can you stand?
I don't care.
There's a.
They're gonna have a seat.
Since he's giving up his seat, can you stand?
I don't, I don't care about that.
It's still gonna be, you can still view it.
Okay, I was just asking.
Okay.
Thank you sir.
Yeah.
Jack Miller, the humanitarian.
And if you're with me, I'm gonna tell you straight up right now, if you're with me, you need to give up your seat. Right here, you're gonna have.
This meeting is for the family, I hope we have to admit that, so. Don't.
We can, we can.
Add it, we're out of here.
People like us, some can, sometimes can be mean, but we are respectful group, so.
Can I have one more volunteer, we have the husband here. Okay, okay, thank you very much sir.
Any of the press want to stand up?
Daddy, you have another one? Mirosa's willing to move.
She's giving up her seat. Another family member?
Jack's a good, Jack's a good dude guys, Jack's a good dude.
Another family member?
I've been waiting for it until this trip, he's a great guy.
Allow another family member.
You know, glad you had him. I don't know, I think, I think there's one guy. They do their meetings, have some really cool lighting, LED lights, light up the stage. With greens and purples and.
Yeah, I understand it, I understand, I was family happy early as well. But you know, sometimes things don't go as planned, you get a flat tire, you know, you have uh, you gotta give uh, leniency sometimes to. It's really unfortunate. But I'm not making excuses for anybody.
A lot of people we've seen across the country don't get involved in their city council meetings, and it takes something like this to happen. For them to do, for all the people to get involved. Hey, right now, there's no more family members, but if someone does show up, is there anybody that's willing to give up their seat?
Brian.
One, two.
I have. Speaking.
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 Yeah, you can still speak.
Yeah, I'm speaking too, I'll give it up.
You can still speak, even if you're not.
Yeah, he said he will.
Yeah, I said, I got two spots, okay, alright.
We got two more willing to sacrifice if we need to. We'll sacrifice all the way down to one camera if we have to.
City of Uvalde, Texas, regular city council meeting, six PM, Tuesday, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two. At the city hall, council chambers. So I apologize that we're back here not in Civic Center, but we had Civic Center booked with uh, Alansi. And we couldn't get set up in time then, so I apologize for the tighter quarters and that, but uh. This is the best we can do, this will let you know, so. With that, Emma, I know you're here with the minister, we want someone, we were looking for a minister to do this in prayer, if you would like to.
Absolutely. Alright, let's just come before the Father. Father God, we come before you this evening. And we submit this time to you. And Father, for your wisdom to rule and reign in our hearts. And your word is, to let peace be the umpire of your hearts. And so Father, I ask that your peace would settle in on us here today. I ask that your wisdom would rule and reign among us. I pray for our city council members. I ask God that you would give them great wisdom. That you would cause them to see beyond the here and the now. I ask Father that unity would reign among us. And I come against all the words that have been spoken about Uvalde. It will not be in a terrible place and have a terrible name. And be avoided. I thank you Father, that as a community, we will band together. And Uvalde will indeed recover, and it will be better than before. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm for citizens input. Major League also?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Is it my turn?
Yes sir.
Major League also?
Yes sir.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes sir.
Is that better?
Yes sir.
Okay. What I wanted to speak to you guys about today, and speak to everybody about today, is our responsibility. And our responsibility is, what has happened with these officers that we've seen in the videos in the hallway? Because as far as I'm concerned, uh, it should have been an open, all these folks should have been fired. A couple of them should definitely be criminally charged for negligence, and we're seeing none of that. Instead, what we're seeing is officer safety. And I gotta tell you folks, the American people are tired of it. Okay, we're tired of hearing the excuse of officer safety, okay? You don't see any firemen standing outside of a burning building talking about, I'm not going in there for fireman's safety. Okay, so we need to do something, and we need to do it right, the manager people are watching. This right here, uh, this negligence to do something about what could have been avoided. I mean, I just saw on Facebook a couple months, these guys had brand new equipment, brand new gear. It is your job, okay, as officers, to put yourself in between the bullet and the citizen, that is the job, okay? That's what you sign up for, you didn't sign up for free donuts at Burger King, you didn't sign up for uh, special rent when you live somewhere because you parked your officer car there. You know what I mean, you didn't sign up so that you and your blue line buddy could break the law and you guys could look the other way, okay? We signed up, they signed up to uh, to protect the citizens, okay? Enforce the law, sure, that's a, that's a good thing, but protect the citizens is A number one, okay? And that's what they need to do, when they don't do that, okay? We don't want to hear excuses, we don't want to hear officer safety, we don't want to hear any of this crap, alright? We want to see results, we want to see responsibility taken for the actions that happened on this day, okay? There's no more time to wait, has any one of these guys been fired, any of them? One officer. There were three hundred and seventy-some odd officers there, was one of them fired at all yet?
We have one, we have one for City of Uvalde on suspension.
On suspension?
Yes sir.
Is that suspension with pay?
That after today.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, suspension with pay, great, great. So I can just be negligent at my job and then take a vacation, huh? Is that what we're telling the American public, that that's what's happened here in Uvalde?
Uh, sir, we started an internal investigation. We've got an outside agency doing an internal investigation of one of our officers.
Right, how long is this gonna take? Because for my investigation, it took me about five minutes of watching that video of the firearms and they criminally charged a cop.
Sixty to ninety days or more, we don't know. He's already started the investigation.
Sixty to ninety days. In sixty to ninety days, we're gonna get some responsibility.
There's other investigations going on.
Are we gonna, are we gonna, are we gonna get responsibility in sixty to ninety days? Are we gonna get everybody to obey the policies and procedures and nothing's gonna be done? What are we gonna get?
When, when, when this investigation is done, whatever actions he tells us to do, there's nobody involved in this investigation. The city, it's completely outside people that have free range to do what they want to do.
Right, with the investigation, but the investigator's not in charge of firing.
He might be charged, but he'll give us, he'll, he'll tell us what, what procedures we need to follow, what, who needs to go, what needs to happen if that's what happened.
Okay, well hopefully investigator's in the family number, then he goes. Thank you.
My, no, you two. Three hundred people, two hundred and forty-five.
I'm not gonna read the address of the next person, but good citizen.
It says...
Hello, how's it going, everybody? I'm doing well today. Um, I'm, I'm here because of what happened. Uh, I, I've lived in Texas my entire life. I've never seen anything like what happened here, anywhere in the country. I really don't, I don't think I've seen any, any of it anywhere. It's absolutely disgusting to me that we have officers that are still in the force. I almost got in a fight with one of your officers, a lieutenant, just not even thirty, forty minutes ago. Almost got physical altercation with lieutenant because he was violating the cup, like, law. He was violating the law. Operating a motor vehicle without a seatbelt on. How do we expect these cops in this town to respect us if they don't even respect the laws that they're supposed to uphold? I didn't know, honestly know what I was gonna come up here and say. I've, you know, I've had a lot on my mind about this, but this is absolutely ridiculous. It's not that hard. You look at the video, you watch the evidence, and you make a decision, okay? I understand there's investigations going on. How long are the investigations gonna take? These investigations can go on for years, okay? And, and then what, what do you think's gonna happen? Do we have to show up here every time with a city council meeting and wait for something to happen? Or are we just gonna have city council members that actually have the stones to stand up and say, "You know what? Our police department, they..."
Trash.
"They effed up." "They did the wrong things. They didn't do what they're supposed to do, and they thought about themselves before innocent children." I have kids at home. I have four kids. I love my kids to death. And if any one of those officers would have put hands on me to go into that school, they'd be dead. They would have had to kill me.
Trade up.
I don't, I don't care.
I don't play that game.
Any officer is gonna have to either kill me or get dead. That, that's not gonna, that's not gonna fly with me, okay? If I see any of your officers making mistakes, I will publicize it, and it will absolutely be for everybody to see. And I will make sure that it gets out across the world, okay? I've got people watching right now from Switzerland, Norway, Denmark, the UK. Everybody's watching these guys. We just need to actually stand up and do something about it, okay? I get you have to wait for a protocol and, and you gotta do all this stuff. It's not that hard. There are people who wanna work, and there are a lot of good law enforcement officers out there. There are a lot of bad law enforcement officers out there too. And I would say, a majority of your law enforcement in this city, I don't know about the county, but about the city, needs to be changed now. Okay, I'm not, I'm not from here. I have property near here, and I have property in the county, you know? And, and this is really sad. Like, I, I love coming down here, and it's sad that parents can't even go in and get their kids. It, it's sad that we have to sit here, you know, be talked down to, like that gentleman was a little bit. You know, it's, it's really not that hard, guys. Come on, do better.
Do better.
Do better.
Do better.
Do better.
Erie County? I've come all the way from, uh, western New York to come down here and address this council today. And, uh, part of my job and what I do for a living is to maybe help bridge that gap between law enforcement and the citizens, because there's a huge gap there. And in my entire history, in my entire career working on this behalf, I've never in my entire life seen somebody with negligence that puts more police officers in danger across this entire country and world than your guys' police department down here. So what I want is accountability for these officers who put all the other officers in danger. Because if you guys wanna talk about officer safety, we always always talk about heroism. Because officer safety is nothing more than cowardism, alright? Um, I don't know if you guys wanna hear a Yankee come down here and roost your board because you guys ain't getting stuff done.
Yeah, yeah.
Here we are from western New York to down here to demand some change down here. And ask for some accountability on behalf of the Erie County family. Because you guys are putting my officers in danger in my county, in my state. You guys are held no accountability. You guys wanna put them on vacation? That's what you guys wanna do? You guys wanna put these guys on vacation, give them pay? To put all the day officers in this whole country in danger? Because you guys don't have the galls, the stones for accountability. That's what we want down here today. We want accountability. We want answers. We don't want, oh, we're gonna investigate ourselves, find no wrongdoing, and we're gonna go about our day.
That's right.
Because there's no bigger cowardism than this, this city down here. Don't go in there and they wanna use children as human shields? What is wrong with you guys? How do you guys call yourselves men down here? All yous down there, out there, I gotta, you've all the police department member over here with a blue line flag, defecration of the American flag on his face. Why is his stripe not yellow for yellow line gang members down here? And you've all be, that's what we wanna know. And how is that appropriate to consecrate a flag on his face right now? Blue line gang stuff? This is the yellow line, this is home of the yellow line gang members, guys. And you guys gotta change that. It's up to you guys to change it. None, the police ain't gonna change it if you guys don't hold nobody accountable for this.
Right.
This whole country is put in danger by this council right here. Because they're not, nothing's being done. We, we, if I, I do, also, I'm a mechanic, my trade. If I leave a tire loose on a car, nobody's gonna give me pay, vacation when that guy loses his life because the tire came off. Your police department's tire came off the other day, and we want, we want, we want answers and we want accountability. On behalf of the Erie County fam, I drove and flew many miles to come down here and talk to you guys today.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes!
So unless you guys wanna, Yankee, to come down here and teach you guys how to be men, you guys better get your board on gear and you guys better get your, your act together down here. We don't wanna have to come down here and address officer safety. Again.
That's right.
Nowhere in this country does anybody, any police department in this history of this country ever put police in more danger than you guys are.
Remember what I say, guys.
That's right.
The only language that speaks truth is body language.
Yes, that, the citizens, children, there's children in this room who've seen things they might, they should have never seen. Then, then officers should have been in there getting shot at, not waiting outside arresting parents?
Yes.
You guys are a disgrace.
Yes.
And you guys better hold some accountability, these, the, the management, the, the, whoever's won in the show, you guys better do something about it.
Yes.
Do better.
I come down here with my cockroach crushes today to make sure you guys hear the, the message loud and clear. Nobody in this country wants to hate police officers, alright? We all wanna love them, we all wanna appreciate them, we all wanna count them, we wanna, we got a problem. What are you guys doing to that image? You guys think about that?
That's right.
Now, let's think about that when you, when it comes down to some accountability for these officers, because that's what the, that's what the people are here, the holding sites that say accountability. Alright, that's what we want.
Yeah.
And I yield back. This Yankee will sit down and listen to the rest.
Gracias, mi gracias. This is so great to speak here. Gracias. Gracias.
Some of my questions were already answered, but I just had a couple of, uh, questions. Hello? Better?
Yes, way better.
I had a couple of questions, like, some of them were answered already, but one of the things that I wanted to ask is how we're gonna change the perception that we see our police officers? Because I was happy to tell my son that they were gonna have a lot of state troopers there, they had fences, you know, maybe he'd feel a little bit better. But he told me, um, who cares if there's cops? They're not gonna do anything anyway. And I, I just didn't know how to answer that. And I feel like it's the police department, some of the cops, to help change that perception. How, how are we gonna do that? Because I want him to go back to school, but I'm not gonna send him back until he feels comfortable, until she feels comfortable. So, I can't do that. I can tell them that they're gonna do a good job. But how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna change? Are we gonna raise standards? Some of the police officers, they ran twenty yards and then they were breathing hard and, you know, they were, the way they acted. What can we do to raise the standards? To make them feel more comfortable, because it's not about us. It's about the children. And I haven't heard anything about what we're gonna do to help them feel better.
One, one of the things I'd like to tell you, we're bringing in TMT, Teeks? And they're top-of-the-line instructors to meet with our bill and start retraining and additional training for our officers. You know, we realize we have to earn this community's trust again, and we're gonna do everything that we can to do. Contrary to what, that all these other people will count, there will be accountability, but we do have a process that we have to... Look, I, I can promise you, we, there will be accountability, and we are gonna try to earn, not try to...
Everybody remember when your horse breaks a leg? Can't fix a broke horse.
Is it possible for you to do some type of, like, physical or weight type, where they have to meet a physical test? A lot of them seem like, like, I'm overweight, right, but some of them seem like they're a little bit overweight. And image is everything, in my opinion, right? I mean, if you look, like, sometimes you see the border patrols, they look more professional, they get more respect. And when you're not in the tip-top shape, it, it doesn't represent, nothing against anybody, right, but it doesn't represent a good, uh, police officer, in my opinion. So I don't know if they could somehow raise the standards on, on, you know, the weight limits or the physical tests that they have to... I know in, in the academy, they do some tests, but I don't know if they keep up with that or not. And I feel like that would maybe make them feel a little bit safer as well. That's just my opinion.
How about we look at, how about we look at, maybe try to set up a little commission? Some family members, some community members, some council members, and we can discuss that. I mean, would you be willing to participate in that?
I'd be happy to.
Absolutely, let's look at that.
Why don't you have that already?
A public apology to the kids.
None of them have a call.
That's already happened, sir, thank you.
So, I did, I did have another thing. Um, the current fountain that, that we have over there, I was, uh, I've been talking with some of the family members, some of the teachers, and other community members. And we will pitch in to, if y'all would consider doing like a koi fish pond there where we have the current fountain. We, as a community, will pitch in and pay for all the koi and all the equipment. Um, because I think that it brings peace. Some of the parents, uh, especially some of the ones that had injured children, when they go over there, they get anxiety or they get these flashbacks. And maybe doing something like feeding the fish might help them feel at ease, so I wanted to throw that idea out there. And if y'all consider it, maybe I can look a little more into it. Uh, like I said, we'll take care of the cost, or maybe talk to the botanical gardens to donate some fish. But I wanted to throw that out there and see if y'all would actually consider it.
If you want to, you can restream this. If you wanna restream this on your channel, feel free. I give you permission, no one else.
What you see today, maybe tomorrow, it's not really the same hopefully in a week, so it's gonna, it's gonna look much, much better, and we'll consider maybe some fish. We gotta get the, the fam, in shape again.
All the ponds, all the filters, the entire fountain's getting rebuilt, probably.
So would it be possible to maybe put some fish in there or some? It, it's coming from not only me, but family members. I try to work directly with some of them, and I think that would be nice, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's been... But please take consideration some of the, I don't know, it was a great decision to clean it up. It looks better. They're emptying it out. But if you consider that, a lot of the kids love feeding the fish. It's very peaceful, and people would come and look at it. I think it'd give the, the pos a little bit better look, uh, so if you consider that, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No stress, brother, no stress. Just giving you the option. I know you like to sometimes discuss stuff while watching, so just giving you the chance, brother. Sheepdog, sheepdog. Ladies and gentlemen, sheepdog.
There's like a fight, the people in there are watching your livestream because they couldn't get the video running.
Wow. Y'all's livestream isn't working, they're watching mine. It's kinda sucky.
Oh, Jack Miller, San Antonio, Texas. This is my card. You're gonna want it, and you wanna give it to all your police officers, because I'm gonna make it my hobby. I'm a civil rights activist. I, I catch bad cops. I appreciate you guys. Citizens are telling me you give them extra time here, and I'm glad that you're letting them vent. Very important. And I'm glad you're talking about fish ponds, and you're talking about getting people involved. That's great, and I commend you for that, but you are not doing enough. Every cop that was there that did not go in, no amount of training is gonna cause them to go in. They were already trained. I was a cop, right after Columbine. And they came out with active shooter training, and as soon as I heard that, Dave, before video came out, I started telling everybody. They weren't following their training. And I'm here to tell you, if a mass shooting happens again in your city, these same police are not going to run in. You don't have to take my word for it. Look at what they did. They were trained to run in and stop the shooter. And they didn't. I'm not anti-cop. I'm just telling you, that's the facts, right? They didn't do it, and they should have. We all know now they should have. They didn't. So what do you do? You disband. You get rid of every single cop that was there that did not run in there when that guy was shooting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You get rid of them. Is it gonna cost you money? Absolutely. And I don't think there's one citizen in here that will not sign that check. Let them sue. Let them sue. Bye, get rid of them. Bye. This is an at-will state. They're not civil service protected, and if they are, see ya, sue away. We don't want them here faced with the same decision ever again. They've already showed you what they'll do, even with the proper training. So please, the, bring in somebody to train the current officers? No! They need to be gone.
Yeah.
Bring in new officers. The state will kick in. You apply for emergency assistance, Delken? Don't handle your law enforcement till you start handing, uh, hiring guys here and girls here, right? They'll do that, and you train them. So, that's what I had to say about that. They've already demonstrated to you what they will do. Lieutenant Javier Martinez today got out of his car, got in our faces, and wanted to fight us. Because we told him to put on his seatbelt. Come to find out, he was the first officer in that school.
Boo.
Professionals.
He wanted to fight us, but he would not run in. We have it on video.
I'll show y'all if y'all'd like to watch.
Get rid of him.
Those are professionals.
Your police officers, your police officers show up, get out, and they have to push him back in his car.
That's chit.
And they left, because we weren't doing nothing wrong at all. And your police knew that. He needs to go. Please. Last thing, last thing. If you guys don't get rid of your police department, nothing against you, I commend you for everything you're doing for these residents and children. But I'm gonna teach your residents how to recall you. You all know what recall is. And take my word serious. Call Leon Valley. You've got a smirk. I already know who you are, and I know why you got a smirk, and that's okay.
Chit.
Call Leon Valley and ask them what happened the last time I told the city that I was gonna have you recalled. We had two council people recalled, police chief fired, city administrator fired.
Sir, I'm gonna tell you right now.
True story.
I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yes, sir.
You wanna start a recall, we start the damn thing.
That sounds good. I expect nothing less from you.
I'm trying to petition, but I'm, the one thing I'm tired of, people like you coming from outside.
I don't care what you're tired of! We're tired of people like you! We're tired of people like you!
Because of the culture here.
Cowards! We're tired of people like you! We're American citizens. It doesn't matter where we're from.
That'll be enough.
You gotta stop dating, because there's kids... There is kids in here, there is kids from Uvalde here that are traumatized, that don't need to hear the...
And please be respectful, mayor.
Oh, well, he...
Don't tell your, don't say you're tired of people like us.
Don't tell your, don't say you're tired of people like us. That's disrespectful.
Yeah, but you're not thinking about the kids that are in here. I lost my niece. I lost my niece and she was one of the victims and my kid is here.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, but don't be disrespectful with him because.
Well, don't offend the coward. Don't offend the coward.
He's the one person out of everybody who wears the governor, wears everybody.
Why is he yelling at people that want change then?
He's the only person who listens to us.
Why is he yelling at people that want change?
I know y'all don't know that because y'all are not from here, but he's the only.
We investigated everything in this whole situation, man. We're not the mainstream media. We don't, we don't edit everything out.
We have to live it. We're here every day. We wake up here, we go to sleep here. We have to send our kids back to school.
I wake up crying about the same situation, Billy. Okay, I love you. Okay, let's keep moving forward anyways.
I've been asked by a parent to.
Let's just keep talking about the mayor.
Exactly.
For his child.
Think about the kids that are here.
Let's just do that for a second. Can we, for a second, please? I, I know that emotions are high. Guys, this is how you get these emotions down. Get rid of it, please. That every single officer that was there, not every one of them, but everyone that was there that made the choice to not enter while the shooting was going on, even though they promised in their training, in their active shooter training, they started way back in Columbine, that they would. They promised everybody that they would.
Maybe this isn't a place for soldiers.
It's our community. We can have whoever we want in here.
You can.
You guys have the power to say bye-bye.
This is an intense moment.
I'm begging you, please do that. And have, ask EPS to help you guys out when you get new officers in.
I wouldn't bring my kids here.
Please, thank you.
I'll encourage everybody here in the press, if you're, if you're listening. Google, hold on a second. All you have to do is Google Texas peace officer termination. You will exactly, you will find the very first thing that pops up that tells you how you've terminated peace officer. We're following that to the T. You can't go against it because it's the state's law.
Can you tell me what happens if you terminate against that state law? What happens?
I don't know. I'm not gonna break the state's law.
I will tell.
If we break the state law, what does that, how does that make that right?
Okay, I'm gonna answer. This is what happens if you guys.
I'm being honest and I'm being truthful.
I know of the law you're talking about and you are telling the truth. Let me tell you what the penalty is for breaking that law. There is no criminal penalty for doing it. It brings you up on civil liability. That's it. And like I said, I don't think there's one person in here that won't sign that check.
But it sets, it sets a precedence. And to set the precedence in a group like this on something like that, when you're going against a law.
Rosa Parks, let me tell you.
I know the precedence is what we need here.
Please, please, please. Rosa Parks saw a law that carried a criminal penalty. And she said, screw that. I'm gonna break that law.
That's a little different than that.
It is not. It's a law. You're using the law to not fire a cop?
No, not exactly. We're following, we're following the law and what the state says.
Right, so this is a law you don't need to follow. You need to fire the cops. That did, that made the decision not to go in there.
It's a precedent you've got to consider.
If you're in a war, I'm a veteran. If you're in a war zone and you don't fight, the penalty is death. It still is. If you run away, I can shoot and kill you. All I'm asking you to do is fire them.
The ones that ran away?
And let me tell you, the law says I can kill them, but my God says I can't. But if you're on a battlefield with me and you run, I'm gonna shoot you as soon as I can. Even though my God says I can't kill, that's what you're gonna get. I'm gonna violate that law and I'm gonna seek forgiveness. You fire the cops and violation of that law and you seek forgiveness from them. You seek forgiveness from these folks, please. Thank you. And as far as the recall goes, look, if you're not getting rid of these cops, that's a promise. You gotta get rid of them. Later on, you can let me know by email or whatever, if you're for getting rid of the cops or not. If you're for getting rid of the cops, I'll leave you alone. But if you're not, like you, no.
I didn't say that.
Okay, then, then you let me know. Later on, you let me know if you're, your position. But anybody up here that isn't in a position that you're not gonna push getting rid of the cops, I'm gonna do everything in my power to educate the citizens on how to conduct a recall. And that's about the only thing I can do that's legal, right? Okay, thank you. And I'm approachable. You can call or talk to me anytime.
Sheepdog, everybody.
You can, uh, you can hand it to one of these guys.
Some of the most of us left here. Hang on, hang on. Michelle Proudy?
This is a great setup you have. Okay, on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, there were nineteen children and two teachers who were brutally massacred at Robb Elementary. Their lives were snuffed out. And yes, there were several injured. As the evidence slowly and painfully emerges, we are now confident that many of those lives had a chance at survival had only action been immediate and first aid rendered. Our tax dollars fund the city and many departments, including the city police department. In return, we expect a well-organized, professional, competent and respectable force. What we have instead, what we are traumatized again and again by is an inept, unstructured national embarrassment of a circus tent full of smug clowns. These clowns continue to cruise our streets sporting their tarnished badges and walk around with their heads held high as if they did no wrong. If any of these individuals who were on scene that day had any shred of decency, they would at a minimum look these families in the eyes and say that they made a horrible mistake. But I don't believe any of them have. Have they? But at best, they should turn in their badges and move on. So yeah, we keep going in circles on this topic. This is because it's approaching three months and we are still being placated with tidbits or being outright stonewalled or being given excuses. And the truth is, if no one was speaking out at any of the podiums, no action of any kind would be sought. I don't know this police department's policy is regarding officer-involved shooting. But all of us know that a well-structured department would put their officers on some kind of leave pending investigation as well as require a mandatory mental health evaluation. But nothing common sense has occurred by action of the department or by this governing body. We know you are tired of hearing our pleas and our tirades. We know there are many community members that are not supportive of our efforts. Some feel we have no business fighting for what's right. Others complain that we are doing it wrong. And I say to them, by all means, if you are holding on to the playbook for how to get through this, then please share. Regardless, your negative comments are noted, but if you don't have the courage to speak your mind in person to any of these grieving families, looking them in the eyes, then your, your comments have zero value. As Berlinda has said, we are not done. And I will add that we will not be silent. We will not back down. And we sure as hell won't be intimidated. The dead, the wounded, the traumatized, and all their families deserve better than three months of lackluster performances by all parties in question, including some sitting before me. To emphasize our determination, we are submitting formal complaints against specific officers who are at minimum partners in gross negligence. We expect immediate feedback and full cooperation from this governing body who is employed by the people. We are prepared to take this to the next level.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Circus, still the same. He can't help but look like he doesn't care. Chip. Clowns in a circus. Clowns in a circus tent. That's what she said.
Jesse, uh, Jesse Brison. I honestly, I don't know how I feel about outsiders coming into, into Uvalde County and, and bringing these emotions. Like I understand you have feelings and you get the freedom to speak and you got every right. But we had this happen the last time around. Some guy comes in, brings all the cameras. It's all good for like a little fifteen minutes of fame and maybe you made a change where you're from, but there's a, there's a way to handle things. You know, you got two little kids, apologize to them. They had a walkout. Excuse me, I'm sorry. You had the young lady here having an argument with somebody. Sometimes I, I wonder if I should even address you and just ignore you. I don't know how I feel about that, but I just, I think that's, it's unacceptable. I understand that we need to hold people accountable. And we're trying our best to try to, to hold everybody accountable. But I also understand that there's a, a process. I understand that it may take some time. You look at history. You look at history and you wonder George Floyd, you wonder a lot of different things and, and eventually the time comes where you look at the evidence and you say, I need to hold these guys accountable. Now, if you don't charge them, that changes the spectrum of the ballgame. Totally changes it. But in the meantime, while you're gathering the data, that information, you have to sit back and be patient with it. And in order to understand it, you have to ask clarifying questions. I mean, let the people, whoever's here that totally understands how, how the grievance works when you charge somebody, the grievance, how much time they have. Until you fully understand that, and once you've exhausted all those resources and nothing happened and someone got ignored, then you come and fight. Then the gloves are off. But in the meantime, and if any, you know, when I get done here in a minute, when you guys have a chance, if somebody's very familiar with the process, not, I think, or possibility or whatever, but if somebody really understands the process, feel free to educate us on that. Cause maybe that's what we need. Yesterday, in addition to that, if you can kinda, in a little bit, tell us, if you can, where Mr. Fardus stands as far as like his, you suspended him, where he stands in the investigation, how much more time, uh, do you anticipate? Yesterday, we asked, uh, Dr. Harold, uh, we brought up the active shooter, uh, protocol. He couldn't answer. He couldn't tell us how many times they did the drills from twenty twenty when they adopted the, the program. We asked them from March, they did the training, his own staff conducted the training, not just for the scope, but for multiple people. He couldn't tell us how many times Mr. Arredondo or anybody did the thing. I don't know if, if he just drew a blank or, but it's failed leadership. And I'd like to, to hear from y'all. I mean, I'm assuming that, that being you're part of the police, you don't just hand it over just to the UC ISD. You know, if you run these drills along with them and how often you run the drills with them. Every month, every so often, and then where you documented that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. You didn't have a good point. I mean, you can, you can do all the training in the world, but if you don't have the heart, you don't have the courage, then you're not gonna go in. That's, that's obvious. Good friend of mine from Bates or Hector Lysoto, uh, veteran rap, lost a finger, almost lost a leg, lost people in, in, at war, uh, roadside bomb. He, he's mad and he's just, he's just, I, I think the problem that you had is you didn't run, run the drill over and over and over where it becomes instinct. And it's a tough lesson. Lost a lot of children, lost teachers.
Damn.
It's, it's, it's horrible, but you, we're at this point now. Gotta hold them accountable, but the people that you're gonna hire, the people that are gonna come in, gotta check themselves. Do you have it in you? And if you don't have it in you, just check yourself out. You, you mentioned that you're conducting an investigation that could take about sixty to ninety minutes. Excuse me, that'd be nice. Sixty, six, sixty to, sixty to ninety days. Dr. Harold, when we asked him if he had considered, uh, an investigation like that, I think you can't answer for him. But if you could explain, that's a lot of questions, but if you could explain the pros and cons and something like that, can't see a con with it, but if you can kinda tell us that. And the cost and how did you determine to go with, I think you said it was Jesse Bravo or something like that, that's. How do you determine that you're gonna go with Jesse? And are there a lot of companies that, that, that do this type of investigation?
Sure, I mean, two things I can tell you. One, I mean, we called around to abandon and done an investigation here in Uvalde before. We asked him to give us a name. We also talked to some people in San Antonio and we got about probably, I, I wasn't involved in the prosecution process, but I wanna say there were seven to eight names that were given to us. This guy came highly recommended from different law enforcement agencies, and so that's the one we chose. Also, he, one of his deals was it will be his people and him doing the investigation themselves. Like I said, nobody can see will be involved in that investigation. Now, we won't be briefed on anything. It will go back to the city attorney and the city manager on that and then they will come to us with what we need to do and what we need to change. I mean, he started his investigation. One of the things we're moving into now is to look at our policies. To answer your question on active training, I don't know, but I don't know that it happened a few times that we've done it in the last four years, in all honesty. It could have been more than I'm not privy to, but I don't know, but two. And each time we weren't in charge of it, I think it was run by the school. So I'm just laying the cards on the table. I don't know what the procedures are. Do we have a policy there? I don't know. He, like I said, I, I don't know what was done at, at that point. But the last one was done and written by Peter Dando at the school district. And in that particular deal, he named himself as the incident commander on that active shooting deal. And so I'm, I'm not making excuses for anybody. There were numbers, I've said from day one, every agency that was in that hallway has to be accountable. And right now, as it is, the only person who's really started an investigation is us. EPS is doing an internal one. Border Patrol is in the process of picking somebody or do some. The sheriff's department hadn't done one yet, no love, nor, uh, has, but everybody there has to be accountable. But so, I mean, we, we will get these answers and we will take action on what, what we find.
And the cost?
I couldn't tell you the cost. I mean, I don't, I don't.
That, that, that didn't, I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I'm, I'm, I would tell you it's probably gonna be in, in quite high, you know, in the thousands of dollars.
Have you, have you, I'm assuming that you and like Judge and, and, uh, and Dr. Harold, y'all speak. Have you recommended something like that to Dr. Harold?
I, I, I've, I've called for everybody to call for an investigation at one, one of them, that, every agency. I haven't talked to Al or Rettie about it, but I mean, he knows my feelings. I was beginning to do, the podium we were doing, I was, we were starting one on ours. And I told Judge Mitchell also.
I'm assuming something like that would be important, uh, so that obviously the more evidence, the more you have, the solid, the more solid your case is gonna be. Whatever action you decide to take against every single individual?
Yes, sir.
And I think brother, thank you.
I hold off until we hear from Law on today.
Okay. Gabriel Salazar?
Here, council members, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Gabriel Salazar, I'm the assistant principal of Flores Elementary. I'm here to talk about a different issue.
That's the agenda. It's one of our agenda items. So we'll, we'll call you. Ms. Trimble?
I wonder what that was about.
Hi. Um, Adam mentioned the pond downtown, the square. And I think that's a wonderful idea, although I don't know if those fish can survive in this heat. But something along those lines, I think, would be wonderful. I do think that, uh, we need to really be cognizant of bringing peace to the area in every way that we can. And I am wondering about, uh, the memorials and I'm. And I am wondering about the memorials and I'm assuming that the families are highly involved in that aspect. I'm wondering if the cities, citizens can be involved in that. And if so, I would like to be on a committee. I'm just going to ask if I can be put on a committee. I think that there are certain things that oftentimes are decided and they're just kind of decided upon. And I think that it'd be wonderful if outside citizens could be involved, of course, yielding to the families and to the parents first. I'd also like to tell you that Max from Kerrville, he's the artist that has put together all of those monuments at the Cross at Kerrville, has offered his services and has told me that he would be more than happy to come here and to share his expertise, what he's learned, what to do, what not to do. And would like to just be a part of this. He's a very rich resource. And I do have an idea and I'll go ahead and put it out there for now. And that is, I think it'd be wonderful to have a beautiful blazing cross, maybe silver, with twenty-two doves spiraling around it to signify, to honor these children and family members that, you know, the husband that was lost. I think it could be done rather beautifully. And I think it could be done very tastefully. And I would like to ask the families to consider that. Thank you.
Ms. Carew?
Good evening, council and staff members, visitors, family members. Diana Velacaroo, citizen of Uvalde, Texas. We keep coming before you and we continue to ask the same questions. We continue to be angry about the lack of answers. And personally, as I listen to these gentlemen from out of town that aren't from here, don't have to live with our tragedy, it's personal. We, it's personal. It's not something that happens somewhere. It happened to us. And I always tell people, I can call out my family members, but you can't. This is our family. Uvalde is our community. Yes, we appreciate those of you that are coming from outside, bringing your ideas, shouting your anger, creating some chaos in our city to some extent. We need to shake it up. I know that. But these are our people. And we need to work with them to get this right. And so it angers me to hear, I mean, the gentleman last meeting, like, go away. Let us fight our own battle. This is our fight. And we are more than capable of fighting it. We don't need outsiders to come in and mess it up. Because you're going to go away and we're still going to be here.
This might affect the whole country.
Well.
Two weeks before.
I've got ten countries watching me right now.
They need thanks. You need to thank them, Diane.
I believe in the kids. Your kids are your family. These towers are not your family.
This could happen anywhere.
I love the children. I have children. That's why I'm here.
It's okay. It's okay.
And if you outburst again while she's speaking, you're going to be removed from here.
I apologize, ma'am.
Whether you like it or not, you're going to be removed.
Yes, sir.
If you speak out again when somebody's speaking, you're going out.
He's not talking to me, all right.
We're going to show the, we're going to show the respect.
Believe me, I'm angry at my council. I'm angry at my councilmen. I'm angry at our police. I'm angry at our school district. I wanted to change, but I want to be the one that works with this community to create that change. We do not need the madness.
But it's not happening.
That's coming from outside. And please, respect the fact that we are telling you we can fight our own fight. I've come to this council repeatedly to also ask for accountability, to also ask to do the things that you can do. I understand there's a criminal investigation underway. And at some point, I pray, and I know many others do, that there will be individuals that will be criminally charged for what happened on May twenty-fourth. But I know that's outside of your purview, outside of your authority, nothing that you can do in that particular venue. But you do have the ability as an employer to do some things with your employees based on performance, based on expectation of the job that they were hired to do. Last time I was here, I asked for possibly considering desk duty, get them off the streets because it is insulting to us to see them out there daily like nothing happened. Even though something significantly horrible happened. And so again, I'm asking the council if you would please, please, do what you can internally, looking at them as employees, following the rules of how you fire a law enforcement officer. And I'm not even saying you need to fire all of them, but you definitely need to hold them accountable to the level at which they participated on that day. And so we keep coming back to you. We will keep coming back to you. I support the individuals that have been working together. Michelle Proudie, Adam Mathiness, Jesse Riso, Emma Trimble, Pastor Myers and his wife. We are dedicated to this fight and we're going to keep coming back and we're going to keep holding you accountable. And so we're not going away. And I know you know we're not going away. And we're, we're just going to continue this fight and we can do it ourselves.
Love has no boundaries. Thank you for all of you who came showing your heart and your love. And we need police officers with the right heart. You're right. They're never going to run in. If it happened again, they would never run in. Because they don't have the right heart.
May I please speak in the part of Ismail who gave up his speaking position?
Well, I'm going to finish, I'm going to finish with the Uvalde people first.
No problem.
Esther Myers.
I want to thank you for just a couple of minutes, hopefully. The Bible says that we need to honor authority here on this earth. I've been living here in Uvalde for sixty-nine years. I am from Uvalde. And I'm angry at all of you. And it is very hard to honor you when we don't see any results taking place in almost three months. We have always honored the police in the streets and the yard, wherever, in the restaurants, grocery stores. We've always, my husband has always stepped up the plate and gone up to them and tell them, thank you for your service for veterans. He's always done that. Now, whenever I see a police officer, I don't know if he was the one, one of the ones in the hallway. So I look away. I don't even want to look at him in the face. And I, I know that it takes play, it takes time to do what you have to do. But there, there comes a time when you have to take action. There comes down, you have to take action. I heard, I heard that the principal from Rob was reinstated as a principal again. Is that correct, sir?
No, I have no idea on the school deal. I was thinking.
From Rob, from Rob.
She was the assistant director for special education.
She was reinstated?
She's doing a different job. She's doing a different job. She's working at, I would have said special office.
He shook his head, yes.
But she got her job back, if that's what you're asking. She did.
So. Why, why would she get her job back when she didn't do a good job when she was there?
You have to ask them.
I'm sorry?
You have to ask the school director. We have nothing to do with that. They reinstated her.
Wow. I thought maybe somehow, some way, all of you worked together as the city, as the school, we all worked together.
We all tried to work together, but we have to say. It's like they, their policies, what they do. Maybe you can control them on our policies.
So I guess it would be fair to say that my grandchildren that wanted to come and live here with us from Phoenix were grandchildren. They, they, I don't trust them with the board from the, from the school. You guys have nothing to do with that, they're right. Yeah, it's, and it's too bad and, and you know, we need, we need to hold people accountable, sir, mayor. We need to hold people accountable and at one time, I think I heard you a few weeks ago, maybe about a month and a half ago, I think I heard you say, we were at the civic center, you said that it might take up to two years for an investigation, for the investigation?
That's not me. That's what the district attorney is saying. That's not me to say that. That's what she tells us. It might take up to two years.
Wow. So meanwhile, sir, all these families, they're getting tired, sir. They're getting tired. They're getting frustrated. They're feeling hopeless. Like me, I, I don't want to live, leave Uvalde. I'm from Uvalde. I've been here sixty-nine years. I don't want to leave Uvalde. This is my home and I want to die here. But I feel uncomfortable when I see a police officer. I feel uncomfortable and I'm not going to go out of my way to make his life miserable because he can stop me and arrest me. Because he has a badge. But these people, sir, they need to, they need to be accountable. You, you guys need to do something as soon as possible so that we can feel secure and safe here in our home in Uvalde. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. When I was in the workforce before I retired, I was a front end, front load operator for the solid waste department there where I was at in Arizona. I had a supervisor that would tell us, I don't pay you to think. I pay you to know. I do not pay you to think. I pay you to know. These officers signed up to serve and to protect. And they did not do that. They did not do that. They did not protect and they did not serve. But my question that brings me behind this podium, the chief of police, who does he answer to? City manager? The other day, I was going east. And a police officer get behind me from Grove all the way to Fourth Street. And he was tailgating me, I mean, he was right on me. I knew when he get right behind me, he was running my plates. I knew when he ran my plates, he was going to know who I am, Daniel Myers. Now, I'm not here to make a name for myself, but I live here. This is my community. I live here. We pastor a church here. And this officer, and I didn't, I could get a number, a police car number, he followed me, I mean, he was right on me. I don't know if that was an act of intimidation or what it was. But somebody needs to talk to the city manager, tell the city chief of police to not intimidate these people. Don't do that. Because we're irritated and frustrated as it is. I felt so close, Mr. Mayor, to slamming my brakes with my poor life and yelling at him, why are you tailgating? But I didn't do that because he wanted to pull me over. And he had that authority to do that because he's a police officer. But that's wrong. That's wrong what he did. That's wrong what he did. And I hope that he doesn't do any, anybody else of our community like that. This, this happened to me. And it wasn't, it wasn't nice, Mr. Mayor. It wasn't.
I'll tell you the same thing that I told the family members that told me. You want my cell phone number? I'll give it to you. That happens, call me. I'll get, I'll get the city manager on the phone or whatever. We're not going to stand for that for harassment. I don't, I don't know what, we're not, we're not going to do that. I've talked, I have talked with our city manager and our police chief about that. I don't think any council member up here would go along with any kind of harassment by our police department, any citizens in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of then, it hasn't happened up to now, but it did happen that one time. But, Mr. Mayor, I mean, he was right on me. And that's not right. Thank you.
Is there any family or anybody from Uvalde who want to let anybody else speak from outside that we didn't give the chance to speak? Okay, sir, now you can have the man. Risa, you want to say something?
Maybe.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
And my name is Bronson Risa and I'm from Uvalde. Most of you know me. Yeah, my name is Bronson Risa. I'm from Uvalde and like I said, most of you know me. And maybe this is, probably I'll address this to the police chief, Mr. Rodriguez. And I know, and maybe I should await for it's on the agenda for the hiring of the assistant police chief. What is it that you're going to be looking for to make sure? Because I believe, I may be wrong, but didn't Chief Arredondo work for the city of police of Uvalde? And who actually hired him at that time?
Several, several managers and chiefs ago.
And I guess, I guess the byline is that nobody actually checked into his background.
I don't think any of us were here then. Seventeen years ago, he worked through Uvalde.
So my concern is, and I know, Mr. Rodriguez, is that you have to really check the background. I mean, actually call the employers, past employers, and I'm not just talking about the first one that comes across. You've got to go ten, fifteen, twenty years back. You know, if they already that old, per se speaking of age, which hopefully you'll get somebody that has had training, I mean, that really has had training in shootings and everything. Because my personal opinion, I'm also a military member. If you have not experienced anything like that, when it happens, that's when your mind starts just going all over the place. Should I or should I? And let me tell you, it does work like that. Because I was in one of those situations also. So I just want to make sure that the police chief, city manager will take that time, even if it takes a little longer, but make sure that he is credible, he's going to be held accountable. And so are both of you because you were the ones that hired him.
Sir, one more, one more citizen outside in the house.
Buenas. Estoy en el pueblo de mayor, un councilor. Florián. My respect to you amazing, strong families. No se dejen que bueno. Sean bien templos para la gloria de los vintiún angelitos. We don't have to go to Jerusalem or Bethlehem to be on sacred ground. Uvalde is already sacred ground. Our Father, who is in heaven, is also. Our Father, who is in heaven, is also very present here. Because like a parent, he wants to be with the children who suffer the most, these families. And also, I forgot to say, my respect to the survivors, the teachers, and the student survivors. That was really tough. Let's come face to face with our souls, to all state leaders especially, especially those not present and to the governor. A los líderes políticos del estado y el gobernador. Ustedes también, no han estado presentes, ellos han estado presentes. Vamos a enfrentar la conciencia. God has presented you with a sacred opportunity to help these deeply wounded people, and you must keep that in mind, there are huge and sacred wounds here. Nineteen angelical super children and two super teachers, muy hermosas, makes this very sacred. Your response in actions, or God forbid, lack of action, will make you or break you not only in humanity's eyes, but more fiercely in God's eyes. You have inherited tremendous divine responsibility, leaders, state leaders and governor. God is talking to you through these suffering families, take a divine hint. Do not be cold nor indifferent, or the lukewarm whom God throws up. God forbid those who try to ignore these suffering families or act lukewarm. God loves his twenty-one angels in heaven as well as these families here on earth. And these families have a great, a great thirst for justice, and God is ready to quench their thirst. He's watching your every move, but most of all, your intention. Líderes y políticos del estado, what is so difficult about changing the age from eighteen to twenty-one? Que tanto les cuesta? If one less child is killed, because we made it harder, more complicated, for an immature, dangerous youth to obtain a semi-auto war weapon, it was so damn worth it, don't you think so? We are not asking to ban guns. For one, change the age to a more mature age and keep assault, semi-auto war weapons away from immature, dangerous tiros. Leave the assault war weapons to the military or law enforcement so that they can be feared by these dangerous young killers. I myself am fifty-five years old. As we approach old age, we feel the aches and pains of growing older, a reminder of our deteriorating bodies as we get closer to death. It can be scary, so why not be daring and do something so great for heaven's sake? How much have you to lose? For these twenty-one angels, give these families great and awesome responses. Minimize the chances, make it difficult for a dangerous killer youth to obtain extremely destructive war weapons. Remember, they choo, they choose these semi-auto war weapons because they're faster and capable of killing more. State leaders and politicians, make Texas a safer world for their children, including your children and everyone's children. Don't allow the smallest chance to have your own grandchildren fall victims to the semi-auto war weapons fired by a dangerous killer youth. You have the divine opportunity to do something awesome, and in this time of awful suffering, you cannot be lukewarm, because this, it was way too much. Remember, twenty-one angelical super children and two superheroes so sadly perished and experienced abandonment in their life's final breath. That night became a very stormy night, in more ways than one, and God was crying too. So loud, we heard his great awe through the loud thundering. It was like he was confirming our angels were not alone. Each was embraced by God's loving arms in their greatest time of need, like footprints in the sand. And God had prepared a place for each of these beautiful angels to be safe in the loving kingdom of heaven. And with the greatest perfect love, God opened his almighty arms to receive these brave and super angels. Matthew nineteen fourteen, "Let the children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to them." The kingdom of heaven belongs to these beautiful children. Dios nos ayude.
Hi, my name is Anita Bush, I'm president of Victims First. I, um, have had two mass shootings in my family, one where Michaela was murdered, and the other where Stacy survived by running for her life through hail of bullets. We are not, I'm not from Uvalde, but we are a community of mass shooting victims over twenty years of mass shootings. We have seen pretty much everything that you can imagine, we've helped people, families of deceased, catastrophically injured, those who have, um, been, you know, shot, injured, and survived a mass shooting. For many weeks, we were trying to get, you know, local funds that were for immediate needs into the hands of those who needed it most directly impacted. We did everything in our power to, to do that. We, um, suggested very strongly that these funds get to the families immediately and without invasion of privacy, um, and in the quickest way possible with a form that was easily understood by trauma brain, which is what people, you know, they have a hard, everyone has a hard time after mass shooting, filling out those forms. We also wanted to make sure that, um, nobody was turned away, and that, um, people who were truly helped got those funds. When you have designated funds, as, as you do, or the funds already allocated from these local areas, um, what we've seen and what we've heard over the past week has been very disheartening. We want to make sure that families are not turned away, and they're not told that in order to get the funds, they can apply later on, but have to pay a registration fee. Um, we want to make sure that these funds are, are sent out immediately to anybody who needs them, and you have no idea what it's like. You have just no idea what it's like to try to stand again after this, um, to try to function. I'm here with someone else who survived a mass shooting. I'm here with another person who was shot and still carries the wounds with her. Um, and we can tell you that it's, you know, sometimes people who think they know best know, know the least. And we are begging people to reexamine that form, that intake form, so privacy is ensured. They will not have to name their minor children, they will not have to tell people whether they're in therapy or not, and do it in a way that is allows victims privacy and dignity. And I'm asking you that, please, from all of us, all of us, please do it in the simplest way possible. Don't turn people away, those funds are al, already allocated for them. The other question I have, what happens if all those funds are not given out? Or is the plan to give all those funds out? If the funds are not all given out, it should go down to zero if it's all for the victims. If it's not, does it go back to the community? Do you know, Mr. Mayor?
First of all, the Rob School, my understanding is that money will go to the victims, one hundred percent. Now, in answer to your question on the other, we've been working with Ministry Alliance, divided volunteer fire department, and we, we do have funds there that we've been trying to get to families as they need them, and they tell us, and we're getting them. I've argued with Day One, with the governor's office and everybody, to get people in here, to get these people what they need. And, you know, I know some of the family members now are advocates that are there for them, that they can call and get help and get things they need, but I don't know all the answers of what they're getting and what they're not getting.
Yeah, we've been helping, we've been keeping people on their feet, the Grumby Foundation has been keeping people on their feet. Um, but I'm concerned about the local funds.
I think to clear things up, we, we have nothing to do with the Rob Fund.
No, it's not the Rob Fund. That's going to go with the National Passion Fund, and we know that a hundred percent of what goes in there is going directly to victims of cash payments.
At some point, yeah.
But I'm talking about the local funds from the churches and elsewhere.
It's getting to them, the, I'm with the fire department, and we, we distribute money about every two weeks. As long as the donations come in, we distribute money to, to all the injured, and now we've included those who were, who lost family, we, we concentrate on the injured. And along with that, I think the, uh, VFW,
American Legion.
American Legion, the, uh, I know the Catholic Church, and I'm not sure, I think some other churches, they come in with us. We do it in a very private way, we don't allow press, it's very quiet, we're, we're with the families, we have a lot of respected families, and, and they are, we are distributing money.
That form.
As long as it's donated to us, given to us.
Right, that form.
We don't have any forms, ma'am.
There's a form on Hope for Uvalde?
I don't know what, that's, has nothing to do with us.
It's very, very long, and it's very invasive?
That, the form might be the one for the Rob Council.
Yeah, that's not, that have anything to do with.
That one has.
But we have distributed the money.
The Hope for Uvalde has a form on there, it's an intake form.
I already know who this is. We already know who that is.
They said it's Ministry Alliance.
On the, on the eleventh, they're going to have the meeting again at the Fairplex, so I encourage everybody to go, because that's how they're going to distribute all the funds.
Right, that's different.
That's for the Rob Fund.
That's different, I'm talking about.
I don't know, but we'll look into it.
Thank you very much. And I would really like to find out, I mean, if somebody could, um, because there's a lot of misinformation. And just to clarify, um, what happens, is that fund, are the local, um, immediate needs, emergency needs fund, is that going to go down to zero, because it's all allocated for the victims? And if it doesn't, does it go back to, into the community, does anyone?
My understanding for the Ministry Alliance, and again, I don't know, say their, but their fund is there for the families that need it, to help them with whatever they need. If it goes down to zero, it goes down to zero, if it, if it, if it's, there's money left over there, it will be a community still to help members of the community as they need help, that's what I understand.
Isn't all the, aren't those funds already allocated for the families?
The, my understanding for the Ministry Alliance is coming from different churches around the country, depending the use for the families, or the use for the community, as you see fit and you can use. That, I can't answer that, because I'm not involved in that side of it.
Well, I, I understood that there have been families turned away, so please look into that, and please, don't turn anyone away, people need help.
I'm going to do my plug again.
Thank you.
For all the press, Uvalde Volunteer Fire Department has a PayPal charitable fund. Please put it out there, we, we accept all donations, and we write checks to these families directly. We are taking care of them.
Now, I'll give you my number. And I'll touch you to your answers.
All right, guys, so I just wanted to, I actually just look at all y'all, because last I remembered, we were all human here. Uh, everybody's got a beating chest, right? We all got a heart, we all got a family here, we might show it in different manners. Uh, our love might be in different spectrums, it might look a little different, it might be from the country or from the city. Just because I look like an outsider doesn't mean I'm not a human just like you, and doesn't mean I don't have children and love them just like you. I'm here because I'm passionate about this city, and I don't want it to happen in mine. I'm also here because, do you guys accept federal funds? Y'all accept federal taxes? Okay, so the fact, the fact of the matter is, is that these guys do accept federal tax money, which means that they are actually employees for the whole nation. They represent the city, yes, but they're.
I get no federal funds.
Y'all don't accept federal funds here?
Not, not.
Uvalde does not accept, y'all's county does not accept federal funds?
Well, that'd be across the street.
And y'all, and y'all would be a part of the county, correct?
Well, at the city of all, we, I don't know any federal funds.
You do get federal, okay, so you do get federal funds, okay, so that's why I'm here.
Please, I don't admit no.
The, the, the police here are public employees, what I want to say.
Most of that is coming from the state, but we do get, we get funds from the state, we get funds from the federal government.
Thank you for admitting that, for a minute. They were saying, they were saying we didn't exceed, you didn't accept any.
There's grants and things like that.
Okay, so we do accept federal funds, and, uh, the, the police officers here are public employees that are also part of that accepting of those federal funds, which means that money is coming out of my pocket as well. Which means I have just as much here, maybe not as, uh, invested, because I don't pay the, you know, city tax or county tax, because I don't have a property right here, but I'm right down the road, guys. Born and raised in Texas, Christian man, and my mom taught me to treat every person as my neighbor. And the sad part is that we're coming here to try to show love, try to bring exposure to the situation, and, uh, I'm getting called things like those other people and those guys with the cameras, when we're only here to help you. And so I hope that we could close that gap between the outsiders and the people, because we're all humans with a heartbeat, and we all have children and loved ones. I hope y'all have a blessed day.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for being.
So anybody that was out here that we didn't call, let's just, one more. Oh, and you were next, I apologize.
It's okay. Your phone, your phone, go ahead, please.
I was born and raised here, good evening, I know Mr. Somora, I know most of y'all. Um, it's sad that our, our city's being divided. I'm not saying everybody, but some of y'all that come up here screaming and yelling is not going to get anything done. All they're going to do is going to sit there and look at you, unless you can talk civilly and get to your point, and say it in a way that they would understand how you feel. That's how we get it across. That's how we do it. That's how Uvalde is. We don't come over here yelling and screaming, and yes, we might get angry, and they'll stand there and they'll be like, "Okay, calm down," like I was just told right now. And I had to go to another room, and they put me in timeout. And that was Chief Rodriguez who had to do that, because somebody was telling the officers, "Take off your mask, they don't have to."
Take off your kids' blind masks.
You told the other officer to take off his mask.
Use that mask as what?
I'm talking, you're not up here. I didn't address you. Anyway, like he told me to shut the F up, and I shouldn't have, but I told him back. Because guess what, he's not from here. He's not from Uvalde. We get these people that put on the news, "Hey, this was done that way, this was done that way." How do they know all of its truth? We still have another investigation that is going on. But yet, we're going to have people come up here and yell and scream at our council members, at our mayor, at our superintendent, at the board members, at our police officers? You know what? I was harassed last week by DPS. He played chicken with my, a vehicle I was in, with three women, which for me was one of them, an eighty-nine-year-old woman, and two children. And then a sheriff deputy got behind them. I called nine-one-one because we didn't know who the other car was. For five miles, they did that. Between eleven and twelve o'clock at night. Why aren't we arguing with DPS? I know DPS for a fact was one of the first ones there, because they're all the way down Highway eighty-three. Every corner, all the way going to La Pryor. They're at the first entrance, they're at the third entrance, they're over here by that new building for the, what is it, River?
River Authority.
River Authority. They're always parked there, two or three. And I know for a fact they were there that day. Why aren't we arguing with them? They were the first ones there. I just saw on yours report, three minutes af, uh, two minutes after the shooter got there, DPS was there. Why aren't we arguing with them? I'm, I'm a veteran, I never went anywhere. I stayed in San Antonio, at Fort, at Fort Sam. Would I have gone, yes. Would I have stood in the way, maybe? I don't know. I was not there, and I didn't know what, I wouldn't have known what I would have done. And the military, yes, you do sign the dotted line, and you get trained for that. The training begins at the police academy. That's where we need to start incorporating that. Incorporating what situations might be handled like this. Because we in Uvalde never thought this could happen here. We in Uvalde thought we were away from Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston. I mean, come on, Uvalde's a small, Canepa's right there, so is Saban now. You know, we're a small community that have all these communities around us, and we treat each other nicely, respectfully. I mean, yes, they're going to have the police accountability, but they have a process that they have to go through. Just like any job in the world that you go to, any job, you have to go through your chain of command in the military, am I right? You have to go through your chain of command, and this is our chain of command, right here.
Here, it's mine.
We're going through our chain of commands. It's not going to be fast, it's not going to be quick. But we still have another investigation, that DPS is the one investigating it. Colonel McCraw was the first one out there pointing fingers here, instead of saying "we." Here, instead of saying "we", because there were DPS, Border Patrol, Sheriff, the PD and.
Thank you, one big heart.
Why didn't he say "we"? Why did he just say "Uvalde PD"? Hey, you know, he's the one at fault. Why didn't he say "we"? In the military, we don't do "we", one. We don't go, oh, Mr. Somora, you did it. No, we did it. Because there's no "I" in our military. There's all of us. Our community needs to come together. And we're not. And it's sad because I grew up here. My dad taught thirty-two years in Room One at Rob Elementary. I remember I was able to walk at night with my dad to go home. He was my teacher. And we can't do that nowadays. And somebody had to tell me, those times are gone. Kids are being raised differently. There's a lot of getting on the phone, a lot of playing these games. Like he was a gamer. Was directed the wrong way. Was treated wrongly in school. Been bullied. Us, we were bullied in school. They beat you up. It wasn't words. It wasn't on the phone. They'd kick your behind. How do I know that? Cause I was almost one of those. But I had good friends. I had people behind me. Nowadays, they don't do that. Now they verbally abuse you. They verbally abuse you to your face. They verbally abuse you on the internet. They show pictures, degrade you. And we're doing the same thing like at the board meeting. Degrading the ex-supervisor. Well, that ex-supervisor, I'm gonna tell you. White man in nineteen seventy-one hired a Mexican by phone call. And that Mexican was my father. I need a job. You're got it. Deal with the paperwork later. John Harold. I highly respect that because back then, things weren't like that always. And I want our town to come together. But these people that wanna come and scream at y'all and yell at y'all, that's not right. If we wanna get things done, we need to talk. He stopped, I stopped him at a board meeting and I appreciated him. Because of all the abuse that people have done, because it is abuse, yelling at them, screaming at them is not getting us anywhere. All these cameras are watching us. And all these people screaming and yelling and that aren't from here. You look like clowns and making us look bad. And you're tearing our town apart. And you're dividing our town. And it is true. Because I've spoken to a lot of people and I know people who wish that this would stop. Y'all, I mean, excuse me, some of y'all are sitting here, you're from Uvalde. Y'all are from Uvalde. You're not. She is. They are. They are. And we had some people.
So we're back.
That were not in Uvalde. We have a small community. We need to be in here too. That teacher?
Are you talking to me?
I've known him for the longest time, since nineteen ninety-three. I've known Irma. And they've known my son. I had ex-students who lost their babies. It affects everybody in this town.
Guys, is that my friends got up?
In this town right now. You say no, but you don't personally.
The whole country is affected by this tragedy.
No, I'm speaking.
The whole country.
The whole country feels it, but nobody feels it worse than the people that know each other. That's an ant right there next to you.
I came eighteen hundred miles to support this land, this children. Eighteen hundred miles.
And our friend gratefully stood up so they could sit down.
Hush, hush.
We stood up so y'all could sit down. We've been nothing but love.
Some of y'all did. Some of y'all did.
These outsiders, remember?
Yes. I'm not talking about you.
Okay, thank you.
But we need to come together and we need to come and talk respectfully and rightfully to these gentlemen up here.
And she's not talking about me.
Just like they said, they're not. You're, how much do you get paid?
Fifty bucks. Twenty-five dollars.
You tell me. For twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars? And they wanna do it for us? And take time out of their day, out of their family and sit here and listen to us? We should give them that respect. And just because things aren't done like right now, doesn't mean that it's not gonna get done. It's gonna get done, but it does take time, just like everything else in this world. And God will provide us with what we need. And I wanna apologize for that. Because I feel bad that you were treated that way. My parents taught me never to say no to anybody, to be kind to everybody. My mother, back then, the Jehovah's Witnesses would knock on your doors.
They don't have a timer right now.
She opened the door and said no. And this was always a joke and they would laugh. But I cried that day because you can't say no. That's how they taught me. That's what they showed me. And that's how this town is. You help each other. You be there for each other. No matter what. You see somebody broke down, you go and help them. If you can't help them, you find somebody. And one day, my dad did get that when he drove from San Antonio over here. And it was one of his ex-students. And my dad beamed because he was given that opportunity to see one of his ex-students. Thirty-two years was given to Rob and Benson Elementary here in Uvalde because of Mr. John Harold. He was city mayor at one time. And he, or was he manager?
Both.
And I got to work with him again, well, I got to work with him two times for the school district and then when I worked for Mr. Rafa Arboz. Because he was the city attorney at the time. Hey, those that are from Uvalde, to speak respectfully to these men. This is what we have. When you leave, this is what we have to deal with when y'all go home. So, you know, these police officers, yes, they will get what they are needed. Because of the fact of the process and what they'll be willing to hire. And, and you know, once they get hired.
I don't think you can afford me.
Then, then the process will keep on going.
I have one question for you. The young man that was sitting next to me who is afraid to go to school because he thinks the cops ain't gonna do nothing. And we're asking these gentlemen to set a precedence by firing these guys. And you think that's bad?
No, I'm not thinking that's bad. No, you're not listening to.
How long do you wanna wait for the process before that kid feels comfortable going back to school? He should have never dealt with that.
You know, like I said, whenever they, you wanna, you want them to have accountability. Okay, fire the police officers, but are you gonna go to the academy? And go put on the uniform?
I put on the uniform and I would not cower down like that.
They hide behind it. They hide behind it.
Thin blue line and qualifying immunity. Do your job. Fifty bucks, you get a raise, you do it better.
Get a raise if you do it.
Anybody else out, out first again, the lady was speaking. You can leave. You can leave now.
May I make a statement?
I don't know, you're not. We're done, we're done. This city's the last one to do our open comments tonight and we're gonna go to our business, but we're done.
Yes, sir, mayor.
More comment if, if y'all don't mind.
Sure. We'll give you that respect.
Yeah, cool. But I'm done, but I, I do appreciate.
In my opinion, guys, respect is earned or purchased and you can't afford it.
Y'all still are going through this with all of us from Uvalde. And I understand that other people hurt, other people think that they don't know Uvalde.
So I do wanna say something. I'm not sure who she, that lady is, but we've been fighting. It sounds like she's fighting for the cops more than the community. I don't know that.
No, it's for everybody.
Now I'm speaking. Now I'm speaking. So I will say, I've talked to every single family member and they tell me not to stop fighting. Do not stop fighting. Don't shut up.
Yes.
And I've been some of the ones that's been yelling. You're saying they're yelling and all this stuff? I've been doing that too. But we've been asking for more people to come, to protest with us, to stand with us.
Get them yelled.
It's like ten people, fifteen people out of the fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, but if there's something free, they're there. So this is for the children, but I stand with the parents and they backed me up. And they're telling me not to stop.
That's right.
Don't, don't stop fighting. They don't wanna come. They don't wanna come right now. They can't. I understand you have a relationship with the cops or whatever it is. We're all in this together. But they tell us not to stop fighting. We're not gonna stop fighting. These guys are coming in. Maybe it's necessary for something to happen.
Yeah.
But I yell, they yell. Sometimes we're passionate about this. We just want something to get done.
And I can understand the community here, but others that, you know.
You can't pick and choose.
It's, it's, y'all, your community. You're the ones going through that.
We're asking you to come and help and stand with us.
I'm not saying that I'm protected. I'm not, I don't.
We've been here. We've been protesting.
I have not protested because for one, I'm divided. I'm divided between.
I'm with the families. I get emails saying, please continue to fight until something happens.
They can't speak. They're in grief.
Fifteen people, twenty people. We're asking for more.
And I can understand you protesting. And I can understand you as part of the family and part of the families here.
You can't pick and choose.
But the part of the family, part of the family, there's some people that come in here and they degrade these gentlemen. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
Maybe that's what they need so they can move on.
I'm not, I'm.
Free speech is meant to cover controversial speech, not non-controversial speech. Free speech is so that I can say something I don't like.
We're getting out loud again. We're not, we're not gonna do it again. Adam, we'll let you finish.
I thought we had a pretty good conversation.
So we'll let the man behind you speak. After that, we're going to the city.
We're in, we're in this together. I'm sorry, but I'm just saying that we need more people to stand up. We've been calling on the people, family members want us to continue fighting. Please join us so that we can get some answers. It seems like it's been working. She says it's not getting anywhere. I believe it is. And we're gonna keep fighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you for having us out here.
The right one.
Thank you.
Thank you for standing up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, mayor. Thank you, city manager, for allowing me to talk. I don't believe I need a mic. I think my voice escalates enough.
Yes, sir.
And I just want everybody here, the citizens of Uvalde to know is that us outsiders that you guys seem to not like and push us away, we feel the same pain that you do. And we're all American citizens. And yes, we are divided as a people, not only in Uvalde, but in America as well. And I've tried to push it so many times to wake so many people up, only to be labeled and pushed away and called many derogatory names that you guys wouldn't even think of. Okay? And I understand there is a process with you gentlemen. I do. I truly do. But there needs to be an expedition in, in that process. And these people need to know that you stand for them and that you're really gonna do something for them. And even if that means transparency and allowing them to know step-by-step process and how that's getting done and how you're making movement toward getting that end result. Sometimes the only thing to really keep you bonded are the small things that really matter. And if it means mere communication, then that's what we need to be doing for the people of Uvalde. And the memorials that need to be sitting over there at Town Square, those need to be made out of gold, marble and any other fine metals that you can think of. And it doesn't need to come out of these people's pocket.
Yes.
In my opinion, it needs to come out of three hundred and seventy-six officers' pockets. That's what I think. Neither one of those officers need to be, need to be paid. And that gentleman right there is a direct reflection just earlier of how the leadership acts in this, in this community for the PD.
Shame on him.
And also the lady that spoke over here earlier about the DPS harassing your citizens.
I'll show that video to y'all later.
I got video footage of that. And if you'd like that, city manager, I'd be more than happy to give that to you. The last time I was out here, DPS followed me, wrote down my vehicle number, wrote down my identity, followed me to the Billy Bob's, sat there while I had lunch, and then literally stood up and wrote all my vehicle information around and followed me for the rest of town. And that was right after our communication. So your DPS is doing stuff out here to these people. And you wanna talk about creating disdain between the community and people? It may not be your officer, but it was that gentleman earlier. But it is also the state PD here. And who has control of that?
Yes.
Who has the communication between their leadership to make that change and make sure that they're not doing the same thing and creating more divide amongst the people?
That's right.
The people sit here and talk about officer safety, officer safety, officer safety. The thin blue line, that thing that that gentleman wears on his mask and it does crake my American flag that I lost brothers for. And a lot of us veterans here fought for and lost brothers for. And he has the audacity to walk around like that.
Shame.
It's not protecting the virus from him.
There needs to be change. And I understand that you gentlemen are making change, but it needs to be expedited. These people need to be in that process, even if it means being in the know. I think you owe them that. And I think that's fair. But I do stand for people of Uvalde and I do feel your pain. Whether you think I don't or I do, I do, I promise you. And I would stand in front of you before any of these officers would ever even give their own lives to protect you. I'd give my own for you. I promise you that.
Any day for all of you. You made battery?
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, mayor.
You made another battery? You made another one?
I got one.
Sorry, guys, my voice is going away. I've been hearing all.
I don't know who that lady was that spoke up earlier. She said she was in the service and I thank her for her service.
It's weird that everybody's saying they don't know.
Everyone appeared on this city council chose to be here. I chose to be a part of it because of the body come what may. Unfortunately, we had a tragic incident on May twenty-fourth. It involved obviously several agencies. You know, with these people from out of town, what have you, that only tells me that the world is watching what we're doing. The country is watching what Uvalde is gonna do in this situation. Absolutely. We need to have a change within our local governments. I'm not talking about departments within the police agencies in Uvalde. There needs to be a change. It ain't business as usual anymore. It can't be. We can't afford it. Our children, our families, our communities cannot afford business as usual. There needs to be change. And there will be change. And it is gonna take some time. We need to navigate through this process. We need to know where we failed. And it's, it's pretty obvious to say, well, they didn't do anything. Well, my question is, why not? Why didn't you act? You know, we see the video, it's pretty obvious. But, you know, it goes a little bit deeper than that. There's leadership involved. And those leaders, leaders need to be held accountable for the borders. Cause a subordinate is gonna follow the leader. That's the way it works. You know, and so if, if they see a leader that's not moving, that's not making a decision, very few followers will actually step up. But there needs to be change. I appreciate all the comments that we'll make here tonight, whether you're from Uvalde or not. But that just only tells me that the world is watching to see what Uvalde is gonna do. This is a situation that's affected not only our community, but our country, our state. And we need, we need to, and we're gonna act on it. We're gonna hold people accountable for this. We, as a city council, owe it to the communities of Uvalde. And this community, you know, they say we're close-knit, we're a tight-knit family, we stick together. For us, the only people that see here are the victims' families. They need support. They need people to come out and support them. At least stand in the audience, stand in the hallways and say, just, you know, your actions speak loudly. If this place was full, I can understand Uvalde is close. Uvalde is being supported by its community. But who's here? The victims. And I feel for them. I really do. But we're gonna get past this. This will pass. And I believe that. And I believe that decisions, the right decisions are going to be made. But we just let, let the process take its course. And then we'll, we'll see how everything turns out. And we hope that everything is for the better for Uvalde because our city deserves, our community deserves nothing but the best. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda, five A, B, and C. Consider an act of the minutes of the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two regular city council meeting. Consider payment of bills over five thousand from July twenty-second, twenty-two through August fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Item five C, consider request from IT Department Chief to decommission outdated hardware.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Councilman Levino, taken by Councilman Bocky. I'll abstain on five A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, report, six A, report, Councilman Steve Bocky provided update on the budget process for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
We met yesterday in our agenda packet, if you will. You know, we've established our revenues and also established expenses. Not every department got everything they wanted. It was just more money than, you know, than we can generate. So we hit the most important ones. Though I think the real key is that, and we'll discuss it tonight, we have lowered our tax rate. Our current effective tax rate is sixty-six point five-five. We're proposing to lower it to sixty-one point seven, which is about four point eight-five. Or percentage-wise, a little over seven percent if we lower our tax rate. You know, does that mean you're going to get a lower tax bill? This is just what will go against your evaluation. But we've, we've come down every year on our tax rate. And we're going to get it next year. That's it. Thank you.
Item seven, matters related to, seven, eight, consider resolution, posted a property tax rate for year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, setting public hearing on such proposed tax rate, setting a public hearing on the proposed year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget, setting a public hearing for citizens' input on budgets to be considered for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. Public hearing will be held on Friday.
That one woman, Diane, said that. I touched her on it. I said, Diane, how can you say that to me? Because the parents are afraid. Just be careful.
We appreciate you guys being here.
Yes, ma'am. I didn't, I didn't come eighteen hundred miles to make a YouTube video. I came eighteen hundred miles because I have love for the community. I came eighteen hundred miles to stand up for you guys. This may just look like a cell phone camera. But if you under, under this, you're talking a hundred thousand people.
We got New York, Houston, Texas, Florida. We came from all over the world to help you guys.
We appreciate you guys being here. Because up to about a month ago, a month ago, several families of the victims left, left the city. Because they're just tired and frustrated and hurt.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to argue with someone when you're going through something.
They're not, they're not attending the meetings.
Speak for Uvalde. Los que no pueden hablar tienen miedo. They're afraid.
What I was trying to explain to the, um, the city manager and things like that.
Because they're not here. They're still out of town.
Sometimes it takes a loud voice for people to hear.
So I appreciate.
I, I know Texans don't like Yankee, so I say the word Yankee down so they can get it in their head just a little bit because you guys don't need this kind of behavior. All those police officers should have that. You know what they said? The one council member there said, that's not precedence we're willing to take to make, to fire these police beyond the state law. But you know what? At what point does this kid's son, if he heard, all those police are fired, there's new police, that could be fixed like this?
I didn't mean to scream and scare you. I promise. It wasn't anything about you.
That could be fixed like this. That's the precedent.
They care about you.
They don't, they don't.
Like me, I'm from out of here.
I don't, I don't run.
I'm there all the time, Andy. I'm there every, every weekend. I'm tired. And I'm not from here.
It's because I don't, it's because I don't run. I'm here to, I'm here to argue for those that are a little passive. Some people don't like to argue, and some people are afraid to argue. Some people are afraid to speak out. I'm here to speak out. What's in this building?
Can I explain to them? Exactly. I'm not from here.
Is there a problem?
No, I'm not from here. I, I have been here since Easter.
Well, I walked out peacefully.
And I have been every weekend there marching for the people. I'm speaking for the people. Because nothing's getting done here. None of that.
Thank you, love, for the support.
Chief, before you leave, I was going to say, as, like I said, a former law enforcement officer myself, she called me out, not this, for the other one, and you called me out for the mask. It's not about the personal preference format of protection for anything. It's about the thin blue line. Right now in this time, no, no one needs to be divided. Put a city seal mask. I'm going to wear one of those. And if I do, I'll give you my word, yes. So like, I just, you know, there's, there's a lot of people. And, and the viewers in here, if that officer should be wearing a, a mask, put two in here. If you think you should have a mask that has no division on it, put a one.
And same here in my charts. If you think he wants a division mask, put a one. If you don't want no division, put a two.
You'll see, you'll see thousands of people who watch this that will say one. That's, that's not to have one.
We're talking about the mask. If you think he should have a blind mask, put a one. If you think he should not have it, put a two.
Personal preference for medical. It's just no mask that has any division.
And they're all saying two for no, no, we don't.
We had them backwards.
We did them opposite.
Yeah. So his, his chat's a two, my chat's a one, three. And it has nothing at all. You have a tough job to do now. I hope for honesty, but I never have to experience what these residents did. But we have an officer that's in here, in the middle of this. Those residents don't think that they did anything. I don't think they did anything. That blue line is what they hide behind. That blue line is coupled with qualified immunity. And you know what that is? You, you, unless you do some type of a tort, you can't be prosecuted. That blue line to citizens like me, a former law enforcement, that earned on every cop in my county, and I want every one of their badges that have bad behavior, that's what I do, and that's what I go after. I don't know if he's a bad cop. I don't know if he's a good cop. One person in there told me to watch him. Doesn't matter. It's what I see. A blue line on an American flag. It's a red, white, and blue flag. We pledge allegiance to the flag.
The two is still going.
Of not the thin blue line of America. That's what I'm saying. So I, I know you say you look better. I respect you. Yep. I hope I say that. I will be. It's a quick line.
Thanks for helping speak up, man. A lot of people are going to keep talking trash about me, but I'm not going to stop them. I'm going to come over and over and over. They can, they can spread. Hey, look at me. Look at me. I haven't ever been treated with respect. I've always been talked down to, treated like I'm trash, you know? It doesn't matter. I made my own. I became my own person. There's no one's help. And so I'm used to people putting me down. I'm used to people telling me I'm not good enough. It doesn't hurt my feelings. It encourages me to go harder. And so every person that tells me, I don't want you here. You're a piece of trash. It only makes me want to come more. And to see that y'all have support and love for us, it's really, it makes me feel grateful. Thank you, love. Thank you. It's crazy, guys, because, you know, there's like the one, two, or three that are screwed from the inside, into darkness, talking trash. And then the whole community comes like, I am a good man. I'm going to get us to work. It's so good.
Y eso es, no aceptarle. No aceptarle. Yo, yo, digo es de que antes yo tenía mucho respeto a la autoridad. Pero ahora cuando miro un policía yo pienso, a la mejor él es uno de los que estaban en el hallway, en rap, cuando se estaba llevando a cabo el nace. Entonces los miro y volteo mi cara porque dejan un sabor, un sabor amargo en mi boca. Y los tengo que respetar porque me pueden arrestar. Pueden buscar un motivo por qué arrestarme. Entonces, nos damos unidos, nos deberemos estar. Porque no le tenemos confianza a la autoridad. Yo no le tengo confianza a los policías. Porque tienen, tienen, ellos pueden hallar un motivo por el que, por el cual arrestarlos si ellos quieren. ¿Qué vamos a hacer nosotros? ¿Nos va a poner nuestras manos atrás? No podemos pelearles.
¿Qué piensa de que se quiere crear una posición de asistente, de jefe?
Se debe, se debe de tener un asistente de jefe o un jefe. Se debe tener. Pero como dijo una persona, que el P, el P ya tenía diecisiete años aquí. Cuando lo paro tenía diecisiete años aquí, deben de tener, deben de tener un asistente.
Good job, man. Yeah, you stood your fucking ground and you didn't keep your mouth shut. That's what you did right, but a lot of those people do wrong. They keep their fucking mouth shut. Sorry, guys. I have to step outside for a minute. I'm going to do. There's just only so much that I can take, you know? Um, going around and filming cops all the time, you know, it's entertainment for y'all, for most. And I know it's not just entertainment for most, or for all. A lot of people I know, a lot of you, most of, all of you, ninety-nine percent, want one positive change. Love to watch it happen. But honestly, guys, going out and doing this every single day, filming these cops every single fucking day, and then watching the way that these families suffer, not just mine, and not just the ones with the cameras, but ones without cameras. We're not out here just to try to get a clip. Get some clicks and views, is what they say. No. There was people doing this type of shit way before the fucking internet and clicks and views. People have been redressing for a long freaking time. It's just now, we're able to do it way faster. With the power of the internet, a message can spread worldwide in less than a day. To see these crying families that no longer get to tuck their child in at night. And to see these cowards that try to tell me that I'm wrong for standing for families and for freedom. How do they go home and sleep at night? How do they go home and lay their head on their fucking pillow and even feel like a productive human being in this fucking community? How does going and talking shit to people trying to make change fix anything? She's mad about the yelling and screaming, but then all she does is yell and scream at the people yelling and screaming about yelling and screaming. What did you just do except for yell at someone about yelling and screaming while you're yelling and screaming? What did you accomplish? Nothing, bitch. What you need to do is go yell and scream at the people that are making mistakes. I don't hate the police.
Is that fucker though?
Um, I like police accountability. I think there's good and bad in every position. Um, and the ones around here just need to be more good.
I like it, man. I like that.
It's like you hate the cops. R H V four-two-one-four, I believe is what it was. And only, only one more minute of rant, guys. I swear it, then I'm done. This really upsets me because it reminds me of Stockholm syndrome. And I, I know I've said it a million freaking times. But when you have a person that enjoys allowing their ruler to do their process, if that process is violating you, and you allow your ruler to keep going about their process, you're okay with it? You comply with their process? That process started with an R A P, you know the rest of the word? If, what if that, what if that was a process? He just submitted and said, okay, I'm letting you finish your process. We have to, we have to do the process. We have to let the process play out, right? No. There's moments where you have to say, fuck your process. This is wrong. You're not going to do it to me, sucker. And then she wants to say, oh, I'm not talking about you. Well, who the fuck you talking about, bitch? I'm the one in the front row fucking screaming. That's why my voice is gone. All right. I'm done. I feel better now. Peaceful ninja. Sorry, guys. It just gets me really gurt. Um, it really rotates me whenever. I'm done. I'm done talking about it. Love you, guys. Love you, guys. I hope you all enjoyed today's city council meeting. I'll, uh, you know, I'll leave this video up for a couple days for those of you that want to watch it. Um, if I can, in the description, I'll try to get some, um, like a PDF file or something so I can share the agenda and all this stuff on the paper. I really wanted to bring y'all in there to let you, uh, hear the people speak. I didn't even honestly even plan on talking today. I didn't plan on speaking. But, uh, you know how life is, guys. What's meant to be will happen. You can't stop it. I don't control life. I just live in it. Say hi to some people. Tommy Wood, brother. Good to see you in here, man. Good to see you. Uh, Kristoff, Tommy Wood, Charlie, Lion One, Railway, Dangerous, Kevin, Master, Breaking the Flaw. Good to see you. On, oh, oh, Brog. Lion One, good to see you. Seeker, Candace, Boyer. Everybody in here, guys, much love. I don't want to scroll too far. Heather Hall, everybody in here. Much love to each and every single one of you guys. Much love to fucking Rogue Nation, Rogue Nation, Thaumout Veteran, Good Citizen News, James Madison Audit, Corners, Texas Sheep Dog. Everybody, guys, get to all the channels. Show some support because, you know, we all come from way different spots. It's not like we're neighbors or nothing. But whenever times tough, we come together and we weave those, those, uh, threads together and become a stronger substance when there's multiple. You can break a stick once, but you put it by itself. It's harder to break the next time. I love you, guys. I respect each and every single one of you. I'm going to go get out here with the Motley Crue. We got some fucking work to do today. Much love and respect. Thank you for joining me on this journey today. I know that it's not over.
That's right. Because they'll let it die down in three or four months when people are trying to get back to life, and you'll release something.
Know that I did have my GoPro. Don't forget, for those of you just tuning in, I had my GoPro right in front of the mayor's face, probably two feet from his face, while he was getting triggered about, and yelling at us at the top of his lungs. So that should make some, make for some very good footage that I can release for you guys later. And, uh, let's give y'all a little look around real quick. It's a beautiful sky, beautiful sunset. Birds flying. I love each and every single one of you guys. If y'all want to help me on the road, I've had people asking. Uh, Mods, please drop a link. If anybody would like to help, uh, support gas, that's pretty much all it's going for is gas and food while we're out here. We got a little bit of journey left in us, so all the help would be appreciated greatly, guys, because, um, these travels and taking care of all these things and the public information requests, it, uh, it adds up quick, y'all. Um, I just got hit with, I don't know if y'all know, but I just got hit with that three hundred dollar, um, public information request for, for a video. So, you know, when we go and do these public information requests and we go and do those types of things, it's not always free. So if anybody wants to help, it's greatly appreciated, y'all. And I hope y'all have a blast and a blessed day. Thank you so much, Breaking the Flaw. Yeah, that's my PayPal. That's my Cash App. Tommy Wood, drop my PayPal. Anybody in here that wants to help, man, much love to you. Thank you. It's going, it's, it's not just to help me, it's so I can help others. So I appreciate each and every single one of you once again. I love you. And I'm going to go ahead and say goodbye with the sunset to my bathroom. I love you. And I'm gonna go ahead and say goodbye with the sunset to my back. See y'all on the next one.